Radio Free Santa Clarita presents The Talk of Santa Clarita. A podcast about issues involving Santa Clarita and the surrounding valley. With your host, Stephen Daniels. Episode 156. Candidate for the Santa Clarita City Council, Selena Thomas. And now, let's see what the Talk of Santa Clarita is.
And remember, this is for posterity, so be honest.
Selena Thomas, welcome to the Talk of Santa Clarita, this outdoor socially distant version of it. So I appreciate the wonderful mask.
Definitely.
Vote Selena Thomas, City Council. I was just mentioning to you, I love capitalism so much and the idea that even in masks, we're now incorporating brand names. Let's talk a little bit about you as a person, just your history. I was looking over your website a little bit. Let's just tell me a little about yourself, where you're from and how you ended up in Santa Clarita.
I have lived here for 10 years. I have three daughters and I had to find a location that was close enough to their dad after we divorced. And so within 75 miles, which was from Bakersfield. And so I came south and provided a, looked for a location that was great schools. Obviously, I could provide a good living for myself. And so Santa Clarita was it.
Where are you from originally?
I was not from Bakersfield, so I'm from Southern California. So I grew up in Chino, New York. I was born military, so I've lived all over.
Oh, really? Where was your father?
My father was from New York, but he was military, met my mom in the Philippines. So my mom was Filipino, my father was African American.
Oh, wow.
So I'm a military.
That's a hell of a racial, I mean, I don't know.
Combination.
How do you define that? Just biracial?
I'm biracial.
Okay.
So my father is African American and my mother is Filipino.
Yeah. The reason I ask that is because, you know, I'm from the south and I'm kind of stupid when it comes to a lot of things, like what is politically correct terms? And like, I was raised, told that I'm a mixed race person. And I have, honestly, I have no idea if this is a derogatory term or not, but is mulatto, is that, is that, is that a derogatory term?
Not as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I think the perspective of another person is certainly, you know, how that gets defined. But for me, I was always clear about both heritage. And so I, I'm often explaining why my name is Selena, as an African American woman.
Well, I mean, except for Catwoman, it's a pretty unique name, you know?
Yes, especially for an African American woman. And actually, that name, I never really heard it when I was growing up until the singer passed away. And then I met a lot of Selenas, but that, I've never met another African American Selena. But that is part of why my name is Selena is because my family was naming. I have a twin sister, so she got the American name and I got the Filipino name. So my sister's name is Rachel.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you're running for City Council.
Yes.
Let's, tell me why you're running. What is it about City Council that you want to be in that position? I mean, usually, usually, somebody that runs for City Council has usually been very like known in that little, you know, arena, little peer group of people that are, you know, active in the city.
Kind of came out of nowhere, right?
Well, I mean, yeah, I'm trying to, I guess, find the politically correct way of saying. I hadn't heard of you before.
Sure, yeah, and I think that's part of, kind of the way that this organically happened. I own Six Degrees HR Consulting. I work with small businesses. As a service to small businesses, I provide their outsourced HR. When the pandemic struck, there were no places for employers to go in the respect that there was no pandemic handbook to the SBA loans, the PPP, unemployment, when to take, you know, how to phase out one, two, and three. So the reason why I came forward was because the impact to small businesses has been catastrophic. And this is a town built up of small businesses. I know this because I built my business here on small businesses. When I started my business in 2014, Six Degrees HR Consulting, I was embraced by small businesses. I networked for the first year with the Chamber, with VIA, with many small businesses that connected me to more small businesses.
Right.
And so five days before the shutdown, California, I had actually done a pre-audition tape for Shark Tank because I was poised to now franchise nationally.
Oh, wow.
And so what happened was, we shut down, production shut down, audition never happened, the face-to-face. Thank God, because that was, at that time, going to be filmed in New York.
You were gonna, you were gonna pitch your HR business?
I was going to audition and present Six Degrees as a franchise.
Well, what is it that makes it unique as a franchise? I'm just curious.
Well, it's a niche market in the sense that small to medium-sized businesses typically need HR, but they don't have access to it. It's either the extreme to an employment attorney or someone in payroll is Google guessing it. And they're not really structured with a true HR specialist, which is what I am. And so the niche for me in franchising it was that there's 27.5 million small businesses in this country and franchising Six Degrees made sense. So obviously, I had to set that aside.
Are you good at finding people work?
It's not so much finding work for people because I'm not a staffing company.
Okay, I'm misunderstanding you then.
Yeah, so HR provides the human resources component.
Okay, I got you.
Right.
Totally got confused.
Understood. And sometimes people can't differentiate because it all kind of blends together. You're still connecting people. And so for me, I'm a specialist in human resources, which is the infrastructure of a company as it relates to their employees. And so that being said, many, many small businesses were affected. Why I came forward was because ultimately I can franchise Six Degrees even now, given that everyone needs HR especially to reopen.
Right.
But it was time for me to set that aside and serve the small businesses that had embraced me six years ago and get them back on track. There's some industries that were hit more than others, there were, and still are. There are some companies that have had to redirect their delivery of services or what they do altogether. Same skillset, different service. So my, one of my painting companies went from painting, but then evolved into disinfecting because this is an area that has to be done. We're talking about reopening schools. So just being a part of that strategic process for employers and being available to them and guiding them through. And so I truly stopped so that I could serve the small businesses that had embraced me. And so coming forward was, again, back to it evolving and you never having heard of me, it is because...
Well, I haven't heard of anybody. I don't, the only person I know is Bob Keller.
Okay. So. Yeah, he's not running, so it makes sense to have a conversation.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so it was important for me to give back to the community that had embraced me. The franchising will be there, but this window and this opportunity to serve, obviously, you know, is really small. And it's never happened before.
Have you ever run for anything before at all?
No.
Nothing? This is the first time for, for it. How's it going for you? I mean, the experience itself, how's it been for you?
It's very unique in that I, I'm used to the visibility because I make myself available and accessible.
Right.
So it's kind of a natural thing for me.
Right.
The, the ceiling of signs and, and the, and the politics of it, if you will, is, is new for me. But I'm battle-tested, so I'm somebody that, you know, can, can get through something like that and still be standing because the goal is larger.
Do you like campaigning? Do you actually enjoy the campaigning part of it? There are people, like I'm, I mean, full disclosure, I ran for City Council 2014 and, and found, I loved the campaigning stuff. That was fun. But then when I actually thought about the work, I went, eh. You know, I mean, but in contrast, like Christie Smith, who is running for Congress, I know her to be somebody who just, not a big fan of the campaign. She loves meeting the people and things like that, but the actual process of campaigning is not her favorite thing. But she's amazing when it comes to being in politics itself, you know what I mean? She loves the work, you know what I mean? Which is it for you? I mean, which?
So the people part is definitely for me a highlight and that's just who I am innately. And that's why, you know, the human part's first in HR, so it's very easy. And prior to being in HR, I was a social worker. So the people part was there also.
You were a social worker?
I was, in Bakersfield before I moved here.
Oh, really?
So I did it for eight years before I went into the business sector. So again, the evolution of, of me and turning into the evolution of a candidate was, again, all experiences lending to the time. And so I think that's why it doesn't feel that unnatural. It's, I've always embraced whatever change that we've had to have. And as I mentioned, my father was in the Air Force, so I've learned it since I was 10. He was an air traffic controller, went on strike in 1980.
I remember that.
They all got fired. So my dad ended up having to take the GI Bill, become a teacher, became a principal when I was in high school and retired as superintendent. So I watched an evolution of my father and, and knowing what it looks like to, even if it's not a deliberate change, that you have to respond to it regardless because it's life. And so that's basically what I've done here.
The, I was looking at your website and just some of the different things that you talked about in there. One of the things you talked about was funding for the police. Do you support the idea of a Santa Clarita Police Department and its own police department? You like that idea or do you think it's, no? Okay.
No.
I mean, the subject's been brought up several times, but the cost seems so...
It doesn't make sense to me and the word defunding, I'm troubled with that also. I, I think you probably read that I'm in support of supporting law enforcement. I have great respect for law enforcement. But I also think and know that law enforcement needs reform. We have, you know, just to go to the headlines to see that that, there's a need for change in that area. And I think those that are law enforcement feel that way as well. And so for me, it's about funding them in a way that makes sense from the vetting process. Now, I'm coming back to HR. If your process to vet someone is antiquated, and I'm talking about the psychosocial exam, it's 25 years old. In relation to a 21, 23-year-old client, candidate for the academy, taking an antiquated test for the times that we're in, we're already in trouble at the beginning. And so reform in that respect, reform in your processes, reform in the training that they receive in terms of the diversity training that's necessary, which I do in HR, but for some reason, it's not applied in law enforcement. And I think once there's some other understanding about what you're facing, not just with your weapons and your tools, but socially, there's going to be a difference in the way policing is approached. And also, I believe in community policing. If there's an engagement with law enforcement and that law enforcement department, there's a relationship that's ongoing.
Yeah.
That it's not something that is only addressed in a crisis, only when there's a tape, only when we've got, you know, two different perspectives at odds. So I think it's important.
Do you think, do you think the Sheriff's Department's doing a good job right now?
I think with what they have, they're, so, I think this is a great question and a lot of people ask me this. And I have several law enforcement friends, but some of them are coaches to my daughters who play organized sports. So I know them on a personal level and what they do when they're outside of work and what their values are. And so it's important for me to not only acknowledge the concerns that I have as a citizen for the things, but also the concerns that they have, knowing them personally. And all of us were horrified and can talk about the eight minutes and 47, 46 seconds that we watched George Floyd die. And law enforcement was just as horrified. And you saw that when you saw the protests and them talking to communities that were upset and writing. And you saw them coming together. We saw those moments that meant a lot to both sides.
Right.
And then there's this minute and 23 seconds that a lot of people don't talk about. And that minute and 23 was the time it took for law enforcement to respond to Tsawka High School, the day of the shooting, which I was a block away from taking my daughter. There was law enforcement that was off-duty that ran in. And then that response was a minute and 23. And no one talks about that and what that means to be in a community where your response time is that in someone off-duty can run in and save people.
Do you, do you believe there is a systematic problem with racism in, in, uh, law enforcement?
I think there's a, there's a systematic problem with the knowledge that some law enforcement have about the communities that they serve.
Okay.
And if they're not trained and immersed in not understanding, you're always going to have that disconnect. So that, and, and that evolves into a systematic problem for everybody ultimately.
Is Bob Keller a racist?
I don't know Bob Keller. I can't speak to Bob Keller and, and...
Well, you know his statement, the statement he made, right?
And certainly what he's presented, presents that he's a racist. If he's stating, "I'm a proud racist," even in a soundbite that's cut and edited, and not come out and said, "This was out of context or out of character," then you're kind of leaving us to decide who you are. And I know that if something was said that was cut and out of context for me and it somehow translated to something else, I would be obligated, if it was not who I am, to address it.
One of the things that I, you, on your website, you identify yourself as an independent. But you did seek the endorsement of the Democratic Alliance for Actions Club. Yeah, so, or did you just recently change the independent status?
I changed after that endorsement, after I think the first phase of that endorsement.
Yeah.
Because as you spoke to earlier in the interview, I'm new to this arena.
Yeah.
And understanding that this is a nonpartisan seat and nonpartisan race. And early, I could see that everything was considered and decided and asked along party lines. And I realized quickly that I'm attempting to be solution-oriented and pragmatic about everything in this position. If I have to respond or engage or even run along party lines, it's going to be difficult to be a person that can be free of whatever decisions both sides are.
So did you change your party affiliation just a few weeks ago?
I changed it after the endorsement process. So it was early August.
Early August.
Early August.
Have you been a Democrat most of your life?
I'm sorry, it was mid-July.
Have you been a Democrat most of your life though, or?
In every election, I voted as Democrat.
As a Democrat, so, but the frustration with that. Well, let me ask you, one of the things that brought that up was the, apparently you were applauding the Democrat, Sebastian Cazares, I know I'm saying his last name wrong. My apologies, Sebastian, is running, he's a Democrat, running for CSC and his opponent was endorsed by Jason Gibbs, who's also City Council candidate. Would you like to know what, by the way, what my Jason Gibbs interview was like with the...
I didn't, I don't, I didn't, sure.
Exactly. No, I, but, but Jason, a staunch conservative. Do you stand by, I mean, the fact that his endorsement, that that's a good thing? When you look at some of the things he stands for?
I would love to clarify that.
Please do.
I applauded Fred Arnold.
Okay.
Because when I first, and I think I mentioned it earlier, when I first came to Santa Clarita and began to network through VIA, through the Chamber, Fred Arnold actually interviewed me about Six Degrees. He was one of the first people that put me on a platform that was very visible and from that spawned into many opportunities, which ultimately led me to be able to franchise. So I was honoring that relationship and it was taken out of context because it was from a post that Jason made, but it was a sincere gesture. And, you know, there was a lot of backlash because it appears I was aligning with Jason. My, my respect and admiration and appreciation to Fred was what was being honored. And it was, again, taken out of context. I don't know Jason. I only know that, and again, this was when we find out about how politics people are ready to pass. It almost amplifies the point of why I chose to be an independent so that even a comment can certainly end up aligning me with a conservative or someone who's being implied being racist.
Well, I mean, I think Jason's kind of different because of the sense that his views, he's not going to come on the show, so I don't care, but, you know, his views are pretty extreme. He's, he's written some stuff on immigration that are, is pretty harsh, anti-immigration, on guns. He's very supportive of the Second Amendment, which is, I guess, all fine and dandy, but I think he thinks it's okay to own AR-15s. And Bob Keller kind of has handpicked him to be his successor. So there is that kind of like, that, I, I think, you know, when I saw your posting, it came across as that you were thinking it was a great thing that Jason Gibbs was doing the endorsement.
But now you're clear. It was me respecting the relationship that I have with Fred Arnold and the respect that I have for him. And I did ultimately have to go through this kind of long wormhole of the thread to explain that.
It is frustrating, isn't it?
It is, and that's the part of politics that if you asked me earlier, what do you, you know, what are the tough things? That was a tough day. But it was also...
I believe you, by the way.
In the same sense, an opportunity for me to clarify. But as I said, if you don't clarify that and put it into proper context, you kind of leave people to decide what you meant by that. So I've made it clear. But also, in the same breath, just the day prior, I had seen Sebastian, who I have great respect for also.
Turned up the show, by the way.
And I didn't know that he was an opponent to Fred, but it doesn't change the fact that I can respect what Sebastian's doing and, and the trajectory he has in his race and honor the relationship that I have with Fred. And politics is so divisive. It allows people to just come for you and any other time that is non-election, they don't. I walk into a business, I don't ask people's party affiliation. And they don't ask me. They care that I get things done and I care that they need my service. And that's how I approach everything. And that was my way of saying, I don't want to get into why I honor the relationship with Fred because I will always do that. No one will ever get me to say anything negative about Fred just because Jason endorsed him. And no one will get me to say, "Pick who you were endorsing." I think both of them are great. I really appreciate where Sebastian is headed and, and I told him that the day before and I still honor that. He reached out to me to say, "I didn't even know this happened. Thanks for the, you know, the energy and the love and keep doing you." And Fred as well, both reached out to me to say, "I appreciate you." And me being able to say that in, in the context of, it's very hard when you read a thread and it's all out of context. So for the record, and I'm glad you brought it up today, I appreciate Fred for what he's done for me, how he put Selena Thomas and Six Degrees on the map. And I ran with it. And I appreciate Sebastian as well. And I, if people coming forward to serve, that's a good thing. And I don't think they should ever be attacked for doing that. And I say, "Let the voters decide."
There you go. Well, let's talk about City Council then. What's City Council doing wrong? What, what are they doing that you would change? I mean, a lot of people would argue, City Council does a pretty good job. They're, they're in the black. They, you know, they purchase the ice cream as a customer, as a thing for the citizens of the city and stuff like that. The, uh, the schools are good out here. A lot of people argue that City Council's doing a good job. Are they doing anything wrong or things that you would correct?
I think, and I, that's always kind of places me in a situation to imply that I feel that they're doing something wrong. What I think they need is diversity. I think they need an additional perspective, new perspective. If you're there for so long, it's very difficult to come up with new ways to attack old problems and new problems. And so what I think is that they need a fresh perspective. I think they need somebody that has the business sector experience that I have, the diversity that I bring. I kind of embody a lot of things in one person from not just my personal and professional experience, but just being a minority woman and biracial, however people want to define it.
Yeah, well, you know, again, I think that probably is not, that term I brought up, I don't think it's actually PC at all, but...
Oh, and that certainly doesn't offend me.
I, I'm asking because I would, I figured you would know.
Yes. And again, it's always someone's perspective, but for me, I am proud of being both. And so I embody a lot of things that aren't at that table right now, that can cover a lot of ground with a lot of people and a lot of perspectives. And so I think that that's what is missing.
Why do you think that's important? I mean, you know, I mean, in certain, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Sure.
But, and, and certainly my politics lean more your direction. But, and, and people know that who watch the show. But there is a certain argument that you're saying, because you're diverse, because you're multi, you know, multi-ethnic, that...
And professionally, the experience I've had in the social service.
Well, yeah, yeah, I give credit to that.
Arena and in business, that's a lot of personal and professional experience balled into one person that covers a lot of ground for a lot of people's needs. And representation is limited. We have five seats.
Yeah.
And so if you have a diverse and dynamic person in that seat, you have a lot of perspectives at that table for others that maybe haven't had that opportunity. And so I think that's, that's what makes me stand apart from the fields. I think that is why people are more engaged in this election than they have been in previous years. It's kind of really been way under the radar, which is why people kind of continue to get into those seats without any fanfare or attention. I know this window, from everything I've heard, the field is always much larger than this particular election. We've got nine candidates.
It's usually like 13 to 17.
It's really...
Yeah, it's almost, it's almost small this time.
So all of those things kind of lining up at the same time.
Yeah.
My experiences and who I am, you know, lend to this time in the community. And I feel like it's a time where people will, the shift in the engagement and, and people paying attention to things happening at this level will change because of that.
What do you know about the City Council in general? I mean, is there something that they have done that you just went, dude?
I can say this, it should not have taken what it took to get the wall approved for Gracie and Dom. And Gracie was a friend of my daughter, Mia's.
I'm very sorry for a loss.
It was, last year, when it happened, it happened to all of us. Mia, my 16-year-old, was classmates with her in a production class and had dedicated her softball season to Gracie. The pandemic shut the season down. So we didn't have, she didn't have a means and a lot of us didn't have a means to kind of close out the year in, in the way that we all wanted to. So when the opportunity came and it was presented to do the wall, I thought it was, like, what is the argument? And when I heard that it had not been just immediately done, I was a little surprised given that we had such a great community response, like the memorial.
It seemed like a no-brainer.
It just seemed like an absolute, that, that, so when I heard there was a question about it or there was, that, that was the one that made me go, ooh, we're kind of missing our compassion in our hearts.
Or common sense, in my opinion.
Right, without saying, that's absolutely right. And so as a mother who watched my daughter go through feeling that loss and all the kids and the parents, as, as parent, I'm, I'm from that perspective and I, I felt that that was a big miss.
Okay. Do you, do you think the city should have gotten involved with the vote on sanctuary cities?
I do, only because, and here's the reason why, if you're, we're in a bubble, but we're not. These are things that still affect us.
Yeah.
And so if, if the vote would have decided that, then we would have an opportunity to say, "The people spoke" versus just deciding not to engage in that process. So I...
Well, I mean, so you, you are opposed to sanctuary cities?
I'm not, I'm not as versed in sanctuary cities, so I don't want to speak on being opposed or for it. But I do feel like if you're not voting for something, you're not giving the people the opportunity to speak on it, then you're kind of missing an opportunity for that perspective to be given in a vote.
Okay. Tell me what you, if you're elected, what would be the first thing you'd want to do?
Get to know the other council members and help them get to know me. It's definitely...
Well, I mean, for the people, though. I mean, we're...
For the people, that's, that's what you would have to do. Because I'd have to be able to work with them. And so if I'm not coming in and gaining an understanding of them and their perspective and they're not open to mine, then I'm, I'm a new girl with no opportunity for that voice from the people to be heard. So I have to do that first. I think because I'm often the new person in new accounts and new companies, I, I take the time to do that. And that's how I'm able to bridge a lot of divides with employee, employer.
Right.
Is that they, I have to get to know them and understand their culture of their company and what's maybe missing and disconnect and same thing. So I would apply that same process here. And then those opportunities for engagement and consensus can happen. So I'm oftentimes the bridge to, to the divide. And how ironic, right? The African-American biracial mom is typically the neutral. I've seen it that way for my entire life.
I don't think it's an issue of, I mean, to me, you just strike me as very level-headed. You know what I mean? The, um, do you think that there should be term limits for the City Council?
Absolutely. I, I think there's a lot of frustration right now because there's, people have been sitting at the seat for so long and it does kind of... people have been sitting at the seat for so long and it does kind of stifle the ability to approach things and see things in a new light.
Yeah.
And if you, and I, I can tell you that I would not want to extend my time longer than the city would need me. At this point, who I am and my, my experience lends to the needs of this community right now.
Okay.
If I get to the end of that four years and we've recovered, which I can tell you this year is going to take six to eight years to recover economically, financially, all of it. So if elected and I get to the end of that four years and I still see the need, I would remain, but I would think it would be similar, I would want it to be similar to the presidential term limits, which would be no more than two terms.
So eight years?
Eight years.
Okay. Um, do you support the districting, the idea of distributing the city council seats?
I do. With our expansion as a community, I feel like it, it should get to that. And it, and I was lucky in this window that that wasn't the case because it gave me an opportunity to step forward. But I do think the restructuring of the term limits and the districting is definitely necessary with our growth.
Okay. The, uh, as, as, as a friend of small business yourself, uh, what would you do to help small businesses and, uh, bringing business to Santa Clarita? Do you have any specific ideas about what you'd like to see happen?
Definitely.
Um, and, uh, yeah, can you answer that for me?
Definitely, obviously advocate for small businesses and their recovery, what that looks like at the SBA, SBA loans, the PPPs, uh, unemployment. I would definitely, um, continue the engagement that I already have with the employment development, the COC, VIA, the Chamber. All of that is where, um, those ideas and understanding of what's coming towards Santa Clarita, um, opportunity-wise, economically, jobs, having the opportunity to maybe bring venues here that weren't considered or were considered and, and, and poo-pooed later, meaning we had an opportunity to have Field of Dreams here from what I understood. And being a softball mom, I've been to many of those venues in other cities and I could see the revenue opportunity from tournaments to it, just having our own hosting venue that is, is brings all of that to Santa Clarita.
And do you support, did you support the, uh, building of the amphitheater they're talking about building or?
I had not. I, I didn't know anything about it. And so arts, all of it, if there's an opportunity to bring revenue here and of course highlight this community, then I would want to support that.
What about, uh, one of the things that the city council did in the past couple of years, uh, they, there's a complex being built on Main Street with, uh, Limley's Theater. Part of the deal, it was somewhat controversial, was a subsidy essentially, essentially a subsidy of a certain amount of money and the millions of dollars to Limley's Theater to keep a guarantee that it would stay open. Uh, do you support the idea of subsidies or, or financial, um, gifts, for lack of a better word, uh, to businesses to bring them here? Um, grants, things like that?
Anything that presents a conflict of interest, I'm gonna struggle with. Just simply because of, you know, my experience and if you, if you don't have fair play in a situation and there's always some sort of kind of backhanded opportunity, then I think that would shine a negative light on any, any project or proposal. So, um,
Well, I mean, the argument that some would say is that the Limley Theater, because it shows primarily, um, in indie films, art films and things like that, it would be providing something to the community that it does not exist right now. Uh, and that was kind of the argument that was presented by the city council, uh, as far as one of the incentives to bring it here is because it was something that doesn't exist in this city itself. Would you support subsidizing or, or grants or, or funding in some way for a business that is unique for the Santa Clarita?
I would. I mean, and again, removing all exposures to being, um, a conflict of interest, definitely. I feel like if it provides a light and it's positive and it's going to be unique to us, it only brings more people and opportunities towards us. But always understanding the fine print is important because I can say that and then there's this other situation that's growing underneath that I'm not aware of that could obviously bring a negative light. So not knowing enough about it, but just supporting anything that would be a positive, bring revenue to our community. And then obviously, you know, continue to be unique to us. That's, that's only a highlight.
What kind of businesses do you think need the help the most out here?
Definitely the industries, the salon industry. Definitely. I have a lot of small salons and estheticians that, that are essentially working underground right now. And, and the tragedy is that they're not able to tap into the PPP. They're not able to tap into unemployment. So where do they fall? Um, speaking to that at the council level and understanding that there is that tsunami that's gonna happen in the fall where restaurants can't operate outside because of weather. And so now what happens to the restaurant? The small mom and pop restaurants that are affected, that they've built their entire life to not only bring something to the community, but make a living.
Yeah.
And so those are the things that are, keep me up at night. Those are the things that I would advocate for and wanna speak to way ahead of when that season changes and we don't have a vaccine, vaccine to allow us to reopen. I, I just talked to my kid yesterday and their teachers are not hopeful that they're even gonna go back to school this year. So we haven't even thought about that yet. And so just getting in and getting that highlighted and having a plan is important to me.
What about pot shops? Do you think they should be allowed in the city?
I don't know enough about pot shops to speak to like
Well, I mean, it's like a liquor store except it sells pot. I mean, do you have a problem with that being available in the city?
If it's legal and there's, I mean, we're in a, we're in California, it's legal.
Yeah.
And so there's other parts of it that I think morality-wise that people struggle with and, and that's for, for individuals to decide if that works for them or not.
Okay.
Um, but obviously I believe in people making a living. It's, it's legal and I'm not going to oppose something that's legal. I think if it's legal and someone has a choice, then they should be allowed to choose.
The reason I bring it up is because there have been a lot of people, uh, that have talked about the idea of pot shops being in Santa Clarita. Santa Clarita's been very, um, hesitant to allow that to happen. As well as I, I, I don't know how they do it specifically, but apparently, uh, they, they have a problem with strip clubs. You know, I mean, do you, and, and this is a family town.
I think they're always thinking about the element that these particular things would bring.
Yeah.
As a parent, I, you know, there, I, I would be cognizant of that and understand why people would have that resistance.
But then you just said that they are legal. I mean, would you be okay with a strip club in, in this town or, or, you know?
That's a tough question. I couldn't, you know, there, again, it's, it's not so much about the free enterprise part. It's about the element that certain things bring and that, and that's why I can see why people would be resistant to certain things.
Yeah.
And, and I would respect that. And so anytime there's an opportunity for you to take it to the voters and let them decide, then that be the consensus.
Yeah.
Because I think if one person says, oh, I believe this, then, then they're kind of painted into a corner. And, and it's, and I, I believe in being able to vote on things like that and let the masses decide.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't know much about strip clubs anyway or the whole thing like that. I'm just, that's a good place. No, I'm just told it's a good place to get buffalo wings.
Oh, got it.
Buffalo wings, that's all I know. And, and strangely enough, uh, same thing at, uh, pot shops, buffalo wings.
Well, that would make sense with the hunger after.
Exactly, exactly. Okay. Um, let's go back to Bob Keller for just a second. Uh, uh, Bob Keller, the great councilman or the greatest city councilman?
I think, I, I don't know anything about Bob Keller.
You don't know anything at all?
I know enough that, well, we talked about the headlines.
Yeah.
Um, but, so I couldn't attest to
You don't know anything about his record as, as a council person?
No, I don't. Because, but the fact that he's leaving, so I didn't need to research him as somebody I'd be working with. So, um, the
You done your research on the other, uh, other city council people?
I have peripheral knowledge of them, only because again, having been on the grind with helping small businesses and, and building Six Degrees, and I think a lot of people can attest to this, and I have no problem doing this as a candidate, you didn't pay attention to that as much until you knew that there was going to, that, that they would make a difference in
Right.
what's happening in your community. And then obviously there's an awakening that we're all having. And so yes, I don't know enough about him to, to provide
Well, that just kills the last part of this one. I was gonna ask you to do a Bob Keller impersonation for me.
Let you do it.
No, 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 no. Um, okay. Well, let's, let's have a little fun.
Sure.
Uh, my kid always asks a question and, uh, yeah, this is going to all the city council candidates.
Hey Selena, what does a city council person do? What do you want to do the most?
I think the city council represents the community first. And I would wanna represent this community well. And for all the, because I have a reflection of all the possibilities of this community. I was a single mom that came here 10 years ago and built a business and can now stand and serve and represent that. So I think the first thing they do is represent their constituents.
Okay.
I definitely would wanna do that well. And I would wanna do that in a way that was, um, with humility and great respect for the community being the ones that elected me. And I, and hope to earn that spot. And the other would be to get our community back on track in terms of small businesses. Twenty-seven point five million small businesses run this country. And so we are a sample of that. And a lot of people see us as the model community with less than three percent homelessness, less than, we're number three safety-wise in the country. So we're the example. And I'm definitely an example of the possibilities here. And my kids are positioned because of the possibilities here. So I would wanna represent that. But I also would not state that there isn't work to be done.
Yeah.
Because I do believe that there's a disconnect with what's reflected at the city council and what's existing in the community, which is the diversity.
Yeah.
So I definitely would want to do that. And I think, um, making sure that the ordinances and the things that are in place currently align with the needs, that's what the council person does. And of course, making sure that we're fiscally responsible and obviously looking forward and making sure that there's, you know, shortfalls, even in this COVID crisis.
Yeah. Is, um, you said that you've voted Democrat in most, in, in all elections, but you consider yourself an independent. Do you mind if I ask you where you're voting, uh, in, uh, in November third, as far as, uh, party lines go? Are you, are you, are you all over the board?
I'm still over the board. Um, I'm, I, like everybody else, and I educated everyone that they should watch both sides first to make a decision. And all of this right now, campaigning is so that people can make an informed decision.
Yeah.
And sometimes unfortunately in this country, we've had to kind of make a decision between the better of the two evils. And that's, that's a hard thing to, to, to have to kind of watch unfold. And so I'm like everyone else. I'm, while I'm doing my own campaigning, I'm watching and, and waiting as things unfold.
Okay. Um, what is your favorite concert that you've been to?
Earth, Wind &amp; Fire at the Hollywood Bowl last year.
Last year? Was it great?
It was great.
Was it, was it in September?
It was, it was actually in September, but it was the last concert I went to. It was not the date that you're thinking of, but it was the last concert I went to. It was a great time and I missed the energy of being around people and celebrating life. And that, that's what that concert reminded me of.
Who's your favorite superhero?
My father, Dr. Gene Thomas.
Wow, okay. That's a, that's a good answer. Does he wear a cape?
He used to, as far as I was concerned. He, uh, as I mentioned, um, evolved from being, um, an air traffic control, he was in the military.
Yeah.
Air traffic controller, teacher, principal, then superintendent. And he left us
How old was he when, when that air traffic control strike happened? Do you know?
I was 10.
Yeah.
And so my dad was probably 35.
Really?
At the time.
And did that kind of change in life course?
And sure, yeah. The trajectory from moving to New York, from, from New York to California.
Yeah.
Because he had to get into the GI Bill and, and grind and get his, use the GI Bill to get his, uh, bachelor's and, and then became an administrator. And so I've watched him and obviously things have evolved where we can do those things without being on the freeway. But my dad would have to work and get on the freeway, go to class at night and then come back and then get up and do it again.
Kudos to him.
So I learned my work ethic from watching his evolution. And so absolutely
That's definitely impressive. Definitely impressive. The, uh, are you a hunter or a gatherer?
Um, as a mother, I, hmm, I think I'm both. I, I definitely hunt and I grind and then I gather and I'm a mama bear. I mean, people know.
We actually thought about that. To me, it's like, I go, I don't know, I don't know. Uh, Star Trek or Star Wars?
My dad was a Trekkie, Star, Star Trek.
Which one? Which, do you have a favorite series?
It was the series. So I just always remember
The original Star Trek?
Watching the series with him.
That's what I do with my dad. It's like the only ball and day and I could do is watch Star Trek.
And then he went to Star Trek conventions and that was
Oh, did you?
Yeah. Yeah. That was his thing. And so we had a little, you know, uh, Starship Enterprise like model that bought him for Father's Day.
Nice.
Yeah.
Alive or dead, who would you most wanna have dinner with? Anybody? Your dad. Your dad passed away?
He passed away.
I'm sorry. Uh, okay. Um, any tattoos?
No.
If you were gonna get one, what would it be and where?
Ooh, and this is a debate because my daughters are gonna watch this because they want tattoos. I'm like, no. Um, so I had to be careful with that. If I did, it would be, um, on my ankle.
Mm-hmm.
And it would probably be somehow related to my dad. I don't know what it would be. Not necessarily his name, but something symbolic of him, um, if I did do it.
All right. Uh, give me your elevator pitch as to why someone should vote for you.
I am a candidate for the people, uh, and not politics. I'm results, not rhetoric. And I, I'm giving back to my community that embraced me. It's, it's my purpose to serve.
Mm-hmm.
And there's certain times where we serve in a larger, um, way. And this is that way for me. And I could step aside when I feel like I've left it all on the field and have, have done my part for everything that was given to me.
Okay. Um, all right. And then, um, I need your best evil villain laugh.
Hmm. That's it.
That was, I like that. It's subtle and, but it really tells me you're up to something.
Yeah.
Do you have a joke for us?
I do. Actually, I have a bonus one. So can I do two?
Do two, that's great.
So here it is. If you oversit, do you understand?
I like that. I like that. Yeah, yeah.
And then, this one my daughter gave me and I thought it was really fun. So if you don't wanna take a nap, are you resisting, are you resisting arrest?
I like that too. And, and, and not just jokes, but questions.
Kinda timely.
Yeah. And, and, and something to ponder.
Right.
You know, you just lay there awake at night going, is, am I arrest?
Right.
Exactly.
Am I resisting?
Well, Selena, I wish you much luck in the election.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
This has been a lot of fun.
Definitely.
Uh, and, and, uh, it's November third, go out and vote. There are two council seats available.
I only need one.
You only need one. So you can pick Selena and someone else if you want, or pick just for Selena. I don't know.
Me informed. Yes, definitely.
So, uh, but I do wish you much luck and, uh, you know, provided you win, maybe we'll have you back on again.
I would love to. Thank you so much. Guys, are you bored?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
I would love that. We hope you guys enjoyed the talk.
You've been listening to The Talk of Santa Clarita. Listen to us on iTunes, SoundCloud.com, YouTube and Stitcher. Barring a life event getting in the way, a new podcast is available every Tuesday. Questions, comments and show ideas can be sent to thetalkofsantacarita@gmail.com. You can also call or text us at 661-505-8672. That's 661-505-8672. Follow us on Twitter at thetalkofsc or on Facebook, Instagram and YouTube at the Talk of Santa Clarita. You can also visit our website by going to www dot thetalkofsantacarita dot com. This has been a production of Radio Free Santa Clarita Incorporated, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. To donate, go to radiofreesantacarita.org/donate. Radio Free Santa Clarita, on the net and on the air, and we're very much aware.
Any questions?